Please stand. Chairman McDaniel.
Your men. Prayer, please. Well, thank you again, my wonderful day. Lord, we ask that you lead us, guide us, and direct us as this board goes by conducting the business of great people of Georgia. Lord, we ask you to look over us in a way that you've never had. Today, our sheriff is unable to be here today because he's attending a funeral. An officer put his life in the line of duty and it was taken from him. We have so much trouble in this, and it's not only here in the United States, but all over the world. Lord, we ask that you look over this wonderful office. We ask that you look over our military people, the ones that are serving today, the ones that served in the past, and the ones that's given their lives in great sacrifice for our freedom. Lord, again, bless the great county of Guff. If we conduct this business, yes, it's all in the precious name of Jesus.
Please. Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, the Republic of America, one nation of God, indivisible, with every intention of all. Maybe soon. We're going to take a brief recess, and we will have our swearing-in ceremonies this morning. There's two commissioners, Detective Commissioner Andy Quinn and Matt Daniels. I'll go first at the request of. Time we'll have our swearing.
Come on, boys.
Would you right here?
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Judge. Thank you, all the prayer up here. Where's little boy?
All right. We're here to minister the constitutionally prescribed oath. Come on, babe. Look at your hands.
Get out of here.
All right. If you would, please place your left hand on the bottom and raise your right hand. You're good after making. I, Ward McCain, now I'm in the solemn to swear.
Matt Daniels is solemn to swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
That I'm duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state.
And duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties.
And I will well and faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of County Commissioner.
Office of County Commissioner.
On which I'm now about to enter.
On which I'm now about to enter.
So help me God. Thank you.
Thanks, Judge. Thank you. I say, Andy Quinn.
I say, Andy Quinn.
You solemn to swear.
You solemn to swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
And government.
And government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Of Florida.
Of Florida.
That I am duly qualified.
I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution.
Under the Constitution.
Of the state.
Of the state.
And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties.
Of God's character. This is Commissioner, this is Lord.
Of God's character.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God. Thank you. Good. Thank you. All right, let me welcome each of you to the November 25th regular meeting in the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners. If one in the audience has any business before the board today, it will be time for public discussion. Recognize and you will be heard.
Mr. Chairman, one of the things on my side that I was going to speak was probably approached by the chairman of the board. I was kind of said the chairman and vice chair for coming here to come. And everything's run very well. We've got new board members on. I'm satisfied with the slate. You have the time to be at the administration office on a daily basis, and I'm satisfied with the way it is. And if the rest of the board is, I'll put that in form of motion that we just maintain the chair and vice chair as they are right now.
I have a motion by Commissioner Jaeger.
I second that for discussion.
Second by Commissioner Macklemore for discussion.
I agree also with Mr. Jaeger. Mr. McDaniel, I feel you, I know, because I've been here a long time, you've done an excellent job with this chairmanship. Your heart's in it, and I appreciate you, and I don't have an issue with that at all. I think it's a good move.
Any further discussion? What is your second?
Fans.
Fans. All right. Is there any proposition? Proposition?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, at this time, we want to turn to our consent agenda information package. Anyone in the audience has any question concerning the consent agenda or the information package, be recognized. All right, no one in the audience? We will turn to our staff. Any staff member have any concerns or questions with the consent agenda or the information package?
Mr. Chairman, I may.
The attorney is recognized.
Mr. Chairman, I direct the commission's attention to pages three and four of your consent agenda. At the bottom of page three, I discussed it with the clerk's office and staff prior to this morning, and these proposed changes or amendments to your minutes. On the bottom of page three, it indicates a PDRB vote, 402, allow at minute 13, 2:33 of your minutes on the 23rd of September. The comment, and it was the recommendation of your PDRB, and not to allow, but a recommendation to grant the variance. Page four, at the very top, on the Dina Tow and Seawaters, the same amendments at minute 14, 2:28. On the fourth line, it is a vote of 402 recommend. And again, on the Seawaters application at minute 1517 and 1536, it was not to allow, but to recommend the granting of the variance. I brought those to the clerk's attention and asked that the commission make those amendments.
Any more?
Yes, sir. Page 10 of your minutes from October 14th regular meeting. At the top of page 10, there's a discussion with regards to your Restore Act consultant, and the minutes memorialize the discussion. There was a recommendation from the commission that the advertisement go beyond the star and be placed in the FAC and NACO on a motion that it be free or that the costs not be excessive. In addition to that, it was reported at that meeting that the Restore Consultant advertisement was also placed in Florida bid reporting. It was placed on the county website, and it was also placed in construction data facts. I provided that information and verified that at the 16, 10-minute mark of the meeting that that information was provided to the commission, advertised accordingly. And I'd asked that the commission include that in their minutes as well. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
I move, Mr. Chairman, to include this. Motion. Your second. Second by Commissioner Quinn. For the board discussion on this. Oh, who are we? Oh, we're wish to. Chair. All right, the chair recognizes Commissioner.
I just have a quick question regarding the checks and warrants. I've received several calls. Fortunately, folks in the community are reviewing our checks and warrants. And I guess I will direct this to Mr. Attorney, as it is at Bill for Legal Services. And it is from Eagle and Shoe Law Group, and there is a check for $11,726.25. And I had received several calls. It's on page 23.
Thank you.
And I had received several calls from the community just asking what this law group is handling for us, and I could not answer that question. We just need to lighten on that. Close to the top.
I see it, Commissioner. Off the top of my head, I know you have a couple insurance councils and special councils assigned by the county. The name registers, I just don't recall the invoice off the top of my head. But I'd be happy to look into it and report back to you on December 9th.
Okay.
I just don't know off the.
Thank you.
Okay. Hello, Commissioner. All right, now, we have a motion and a second on the floor for these minutes corrections. Any, anyone from the audience, opposition, direction pass five and oh. All right, anyone else with the staff have any questions with the consent or the information package? If not, now we'll turn to the board. Does any board member have any questions? Consent information package? All right, I need a motion. Now, a motion by Commissioner Jaeger to accept. Consent agenda?
Jaeger.
Second by Commissioner Quinn. Any other discussion? Any discussion from the audience? All right, if there's no opposition, the motion passed to accept the consent and information package pass five and oh. All right, this time we go to county staff. Good morning, Ms. Roberts. How are you? All right, do you have anything before the board this morning? Adam Clark?
No.
Thank you. Harry?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a few items this morning.
All right, get out of the floor.
Thank you. My first item is Small County Coalition has sent their request for the 2015 Board of Directors and Staff Liaison. So if I could get the board to consider that, we could either do it now or at the next meeting. I just received this yesterday, asking for the members for next year.
I think in the, right now, it's the chairman and myself.
Correct.
And our butler staff.
Correct.
That's it. If everybody's comfortable with that, I'll make the motion to keep that.
Motion keep. Got a second by Commissioner Macklemore. Any other board discussion on this? Anyone from the audience, opposition, motion pass five and oh.
Thank you, sir.
Stay with those same three.
My next item, same request from the Appalachian Regional Planning Council. Our current members are Chairman McDaniel, the municipal is Tony Justice, and the governor's appointee is Mr. Hammond. I just need, it's.
So move to keep the same if everybody's willing to serve.
Okay. Also, I'll be glad to serve. Motion by Commissioner Jaeger. Second by Commissioner Macklemore. Any other board discussion? Anyone in the audience, any discussion from the audience? No opposition, motion pass is five oh to stay with the same ARPC.
Thank you, sir. My next item, we had bid number 1415-05. This was the emergency bid for the computers for EMS to put into their vehicles. We received two bids. Our IT department evaluated these bids for us because of the technical parameters of the equipment that's needed.
Talking about the monitors.
The, the.
The monitor.
They're not monitors, they're laptops to go into the.
Oh, okay. I'm saying corrected, okay.
And it's 10 of them. And the two bids, low bid unfortunately was not to specifications. There was only $600 between low bid and high bid, and the only difference in the two bids was the high bid had signature ability on screen, and that way patients can sign in the vehicles as they're being transported. So we retained their signatures electronically on the screen, and it was a $600 difference. So we're recommending PCMG, PC Mall for 10. See, the laptops, the amount of the bid is $35,110.
And you budgeted for this, hadn't you?
Which field are you? That's five of these. Thirty-five, how much?
Thirty-five, 110.
Come on, Mr. Chairman. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Macklemore. Yeah, I'll say. Second by Commissioner Jaeger. Any other board discussion on these monitors? One from the audience, opposition, pass five and oh.
Thank you, sir.
Stay with those same three.
My next item, same request from the Florida Department of Law Enforcement for our sheriff's office, the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. I'm asking for the board to accept this grant on behalf of the sheriff's office. This is for tasers and camera upgrades, and the amount of this award is $19,805.
Come on, Mr. Chairman. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Macklemore. Second by Commissioner Jaeger. Any other board discussion on these monitors? One from the audience, opposition, pass five and oh.
Thank you, sir.
Stay with those same three.
My next item, we have received from the Florida Department of Law Enforcement for our sheriff's office, the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. I'm asking for the board to accept this grant on behalf of the sheriff's office. This is for tasers and camera upgrades, and the amount of this award is $19,805.
Come on, Mr. Chairman. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Macklemore. Second by Commissioner Jaeger. Any other board discussion on these monitors? One from the audience, opposition, pass five and oh.
Thank you, sir. Next item, we have received from the Florida Department of Law Enforcement for our sheriff's office, the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. I'm asking for the board to accept this grant on behalf of the sheriff's office. This is for tasers and camera upgrades, and the amount of this award is $19,805.
Come on, Mr. Chairman. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Macklemore. Second by Commissioner Jaeger. Any other board discussion? Anyone in the audience, any discussion from the audience? No opposition, motion pass is five oh to stay with the same ARPC.
Thank you, sir. Next item, we have received from the Florida Department of Law Enforcement for our sheriff's office, the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. I'm asking for the board to accept this grant on behalf of the sheriff's office. This is for tasers and camera upgrades, and the amount of this award is $19,805.
Come on, Mr. Chairman. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Macklemore. Second by Commissioner Jaeger. Any other board discussion on these monitors? One from the audience, opposition, pass five and oh.
Thank you, sir. Next item, we have received from the Florida Department of Law Enforcement for our sheriff's office, the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. I'm asking for the board to accept this grant on behalf of the sheriff's office. This is for tasers and camera upgrades, and the amount of this award is $19,805.
Come on, Mr. Chairman. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Macklemore. Second by Commissioner Jaeger. Any other board discussion on these monitors? One from the audience, opposition, pass five and oh.
Thank you, sir.
Attorney, take care of that, would you please?
Mr. Chairman, my last item for today is a request asking the board if they would allow. Previously, the boards allowed our fire departments and others to have holiday feeds for those. We used to do employee appreciations, and we were just asking if the board would allow us to do a Thanksgiving and a Christmas luncheon for the board employees this year.
Second, that's something we've always done, and we should just make that kind of a policy. So we don't have to bring it.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Macklemore.
Can we include in that motion to make that a policy?
Yeah.
So we don't have to bring that.
Yeah, all right. We'll do that. Motion by, just a minute.
Does the board want to put a dollar limit on that?
Let these fire department do their own thing. This is board.
Yeah, we have a policy for the fire departments and such. I was just trying to relate back to that. We had done that for them, but not for the board employees for the Thanksgiving and for Christmas.
I think what you have so far in policy is that the board can allow departmental appreciation dinners up to, and I think our department, up to $300.
This will be for all board employees, so it's going to, it's kind of hard to determine how much. I don't know how much we would need, but it's about 85 employees, I believe.
I'll hold off on the policy change. We'll find out how much that is, and next time we do this, let's have a dollar figure, and we'll make it a policy.
All right, so your motion is going to stand, your second. And any further board discussion on this? Holidays for our employees, anyone from the audience, not motion pass five and oh.
That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, let's talk down here. Ms. Jenkins, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner.
Good morning.
TDC. The first part of it is really a year in review for fiscal 2013-14. Most of the goals were not only met but exceeded. However, I did not meet the goal of 20% increase in tourist development tax. September collection were down 11.9%. We were just shy of $10,000 compared to September of 2013. There are a number of different factors in there. You were right, Commissioner Macklemore, but I told you I'd get up and tell you if I didn't hit my goal.
Thank you.
So we'll work harder. Over the last two years, tourism has increased 23%. This was our second year in a row with tourist development tax collections over $1 million. The four pennies were forecasted to bring in $870,000 worth of revenue, and they brought in $1,188,482.41. So we're working on getting our goal for this current fiscal year of 10%. You'll see in here also that I've broken out the different seasons. As part of our goal this year is to, is to maintain or sustain the tourist industry and the visitation that we have in the summer, but also start working on the shoulder seasons. This past year, fall was up 7.9%. Winter was up 20.72%. Spring was up 15.36%, and summer was up 10.72%. So we are focusing our marketing efforts on increasing tourism from September through May, not taking our eye off summer, but certainly spreading it out. As part of our, as part of our planned scope of work for this year, we updated our mission statements to, with language that says to strive in a balanced and sustainable manner and to make sure that our efforts are balanced with a local quality of life. So feel free to go through the report if you have any questions. I did report this at our annual meeting on October 28th. We had about 70 people, which was a nice, it was a very nice meeting. Commissioner Jaeger sat on our forum when we had an open discussion, and our goal is to make sure we're communicating with the community what we're doing and how tourism may affect some of our local issues. Our winter fun calendar and program has kicked off. The website's up, our press releases are out, we have some local media coverage. Don't forget about our Celebrate Twice. We are, we are expanding that Celebrate Twice program this year to include family activities such as scavenger hunt throughout the day. Last year, the entire day was packed. It's not just an evening event. We've expanded on adding another trolley so that we're getting people from Gulf County to Bay County in a mindful manner, and we're having a lot of fun with it. Finally, I'm going to ask today, since forming the Gulf County Film Commission, I've had a lot of inquiry from production companies. We have three active productions that will be taking place here in Gulf County, starting as soon as the first weekend in December. The show, the networks that these shows will be on are very good for us, HGTV, Fox Sports, and the Weather Channel. So they'll bring awareness of Gulf County, and they're good shows. They meet our brand. One of the shows, and it's not always, but one of the productions has location fees, and they will be paying some location fees. They're not large, they don't all have location fees. But I'm asking you today to allow myself and Ms. Kapinski to work with the county attorney and the clerk's office to set up a revenue and expense line item in my budget. So when location fees do come in, they'll go into that fund, and I'll work with the county attorney to craft some parameters on the future expenditures of those funds. So they would come in and be used for future film, not for, go into the general fund for other expenditures. And I'm asking for permission today to do so and amend my budget, and also to work with the attorney so next meeting I can put some parameters in front of you to approve.
And Jennifer, just for clarification, you're not establishing a new budget to be funded through the county or anything else. All you're doing is establishing a budget, that the revenues that come in will be put in that specific budget to be spent on those specific things for the film industry, so to speak.
Correct. The film, film actually falls under the TDC and is a kind of hybrid for EDC. The production that's going to be coming in for the show on the Weather Channel, they're renting three homes in the month of February for 28 days. They'll employ local caters, they need three meals a day for the staff and the crew, they'll need services, they'll need medics, they'll need, they'll need security. So it's impacting not largely, but it will, and they're higher locally as well. So that it naturally falls under the TDC, and I just wanted to, as we're forming that film commission, put these checks and balances in place.
So move to proceed with that, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Second for discussion, one question.
Motion by Commissioner Jaeger, second for discussion over here. Are you out of floor, Commissioner?
Just one question. Have you identified your locations yet? Where they're going to be set up at?
They're coming here December 15th, 16th, and 17th, and we'll be scouting. The location that I pitched was in the northern end of the county, up on the Dead Lakes, and after the 15th, 16th, and 17th, when we narrow it down, I'll come back to you for permission. If they're using a county park, they'll be staging some of their RVs and equipment there, and I will be sure that I, you know, get proper permission from any and all district that might be affected by it. They'll, they'll be here for 26 days, 26 days, and they'll be filming 10, 10 out of those 26 days, 26 or 28 days. We're working on it. I'm working with Ms. Manuel on helping for medics, talk to the sheriff's department for security, and then some of the other local businesses to secure it all.
The only, the only issue we may have now, and we have to be very careful with this, we won't want to clog up.
Right.
Our local boat ramps and parks and stuff like that.
And, and I understand that as soon as we go through the, go through the location, I'll go in the back to you, and if they're not feasible locations, then they're not, they're not feasible locations.
And Ms. Jenkins, the.
You recognize.
The medics, the security are, is this company paying the additional fees for that as well, or in addition to the location fees?
Yes, ma'am.
And I would like to hear the motion stated.
The motion is to allow Ms. Jenkins to work with staff and work with the clerk's office to establish a budget for the implementation of this program.
Good, will you say? Chair, let's go here before we call for the vote. Go ahead.
I'm not necessarily establishing the budget, I'm setting up the revenue and expenditures line items for the future. So the budget would, my time would fall under TDC as normal, there's no additional line items.
Now, let me address the clerk over here. Madam Clerk, do you see any conflict here, any problems? Yes, just setting, all we're doing, setting up.
Okay.
All right, just so we're all on the same page here, that's the main thing. Chair, you recognize.
So my question would be, if we didn't do it this way, what is the alternative? What would happen if we didn't ask this?
I could probably ask for that money to come into the general fund. Would.
It would go into the general fund. Yes, all right, thank you.
Ms. Jenkins, just, all you're doing is you're encumbering potential revenue that comes to the county, but any proposals are going to come back to this commission.
Absolutely.
For final approval.
Yes.
And from the program to the services from the county, to the costs, to the impact, to our public ramps and everything, are all going to be presented to the county commission for final approval.
Yes.
Today is only about setting up two line items, potential revenue, and then to encumber that money for future use on your film commission.
Correct.
Okay.
And this is all new. There'll be other issues like contracts and things, but once that, for this, for this one particular, after the 17th of December, I'll know more, and I just want to have this system in place.
Mr. Chairman.
Chair.
I just want to clarify. So for the public edification, this means that the money from these location fees would come into this particular budget or whatever word you want to use, and then it would be used in a fashion that is indicated for those monies instead of for whatever the county would need out of the general funds. Thank you.
Any more? We have our motion, we have our second. Any further board discussion? Anyone? Further board discussion? Okay, we're good over here. Anyone from the audience on this? If there's no opposition, the motion pass.
I'm opposed.
You're opposed, so the vote is four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jenkins, what? Don't mind, Mr. Chairman. Chair, we recognize, watch these here. One of the items on my list is, we've got committees and all, we've been working on figuring out how do we do beach nourishment going forward, and one of the first things we have to do is get this thing designed and start getting some monies together to do that. And what I ask is for the, for the coastal engineer, who is Michael Dombrowski out of Destin, to give us a proposal. He has done that. However, what I would like to do is give the attorney and Ms. Jenkins the authority to, if we need to advertise that, Mr. Attorney, or if we need to go ahead and review the proposal and negotiate the proposal, whatever we need to do, Ms. Jenkins and I and others are going to meet with DEP on the fifth.
Third.
On the third of this next month. One of the things.
I told you I'd get up and tell you if I didn't hit my goal.
Thank you.
So we'll work harder. Over the last two years tourism has increased 23 percent. This was our second year in a row with tourist development tax collections over a million dollars. The four pennies were forecasted to bring in $870,000 worth of revenue and they brought in $1,188,482.41. So we're working on getting our goal for this current fiscal year of 10 percent. You'll see in here also that I've broken out the different seasons as part of our goal this year is to maintain or sustain the tourist industry and the visitation that we have in the summer, but also start working on the shoulder seasons. This past year, fall was up 7.9 percent, winter was up 20.72 percent, spring was up 15.36 percent, and summer was up 10.72 percent. So we are focusing our marketing efforts on increasing tourism from September through May, not taking our eye off summer, but certainly spreading it out. As part of our plan, scope of work for this year, we updated our mission statements to, with language that says to strive in a balanced and sustainable manner and to make sure that our efforts are balanced with the local quality of life. So feel free to go through the report if you have any questions. I did report this at our annual meeting on October 28th. We had about 70 people, which was a nice, it was a very nice meeting. Commissioner Jaeger sat on our forum when we had an open discussion and our goal is to make sure we're communicating with the community what we're doing and how tourism may affect some of our local issues. Our winter fun calendar and program has kicked off. The website's up, our press releases are out, we have some local media coverage. Don't forget about our Celebrate Twice. We are expanding that Celebrate Twice program this year to include family activities such as scavenger hunt throughout the day. Last year, the entire day was packed. It's not just an evening event. We've expanded on adding another trolley so that we're getting people from Gulf County to Bay County in a mindful manner and we're having a lot of fun with it. Finally, I'm going to ask today, since forming the Gulf County Film Commission, I've had a lot of inquiry from production companies. We have three active productions that will be taking place here in Gulf County, starting as soon as the first weekend in December. The networks that these shows will be on are very good for us, HGTV, Fox Sports, and the Weather Channel. So they'll bring awareness of Gulf County and they're good shows. They meet our brand. One of the shows, and it's not always, but one of the productions has location fees and they will be paying some location fees. They're not large, they don't all have location fees. But I'm asking you today to allow myself and Ms. Kapinski to work with the county attorney and the clerk's office to set up a revenue and expense line item in my budget. So when location fees do come in, they'll go into that fund and I'll work with the county attorney to craft some parameters on the future expenditures of those funds. So they would come in and be used for future film, not for going to the general fund for other expenditures. And I'm asking for permission today to do so and amend my budget and also to work with the attorney so next meeting I can put some parameters in front of you to approve.
And Jennifer, just for clarification, you're not establishing a new budget to be funded through the county or anything else. All you're doing is establishing a budget that the revenues that come in will be put in that specific budget to be spent on those specific things for the film industry, so to speak.
Correct. The film actually falls under the TDC and is a kind of hybrid for EDC. The production that's going to be coming in for the show on the Weather Channel, they're renting three homes in the month of February for 28 days. They'll employ local caterers, they need three meals a day for the staff and the crew, they'll need services, they'll need medics, they'll need security. So it's impacting not largely, but it will, and they're higher locally as well. So that it naturally falls under the TDC and I just wanted to, as we're forming that film commission, put these checks and balances in place.
So move to proceed with that.
Second for discussion, one question. Ms. Jenkins.
Motion by Commissioner Jaeger, second for discussion over here. Are you out of floor, Commissioner?
Just one question. Have you identified your locations yet? Where they're going to be set up at?
They're coming here December 15th, 16th, and 17th and we'll be scouting. The location that I pitched was in the northern end of the county, up on the Dead Lakes. And after the 15th, 16th, and 17th, when we narrow it down, I'll come back to you for permission. If they're using a county park, they'll be staging some of their RVs and equipment there and I will be sure that I get proper permission from the county and all the district that might be affected by it. They'll be here for 26 days, 26 days and they'll be filming 10, 10 out of those 26 days, 26 or 28 days. We're working on it. I'm working with Ms. Manuel on helping for medics, talk to the sheriff's department for security, and then some of the other local businesses to secure it all.
The only issue we may have now, and we have to be very careful with this, we won't want to clog up our local boat ramps and parks and stuff like that.
And I understand that as soon as we go through the, go through the location, I'll go in the back to you and if they're not feasible locations, then they're not, they're not feasible locations.
Ms. Jenkins, the
You recognize.
The medics, the security are, is this company paying the additional fees for that as well or in addition to the location fees?
Yes, ma'am.
And I would like to hear the motion stated.
The motion is to allow Ms. Jenkins to work with staff and work with the clerk's office to establish a budget for the implementation of this program. Right. Take it. Good, will you say?
Sure. Let's go here before we call for the vote. Go ahead.
I'm not necessarily establishing the budget, I'm setting up the revenue and expenditures line items for the future. So the budget would, my time would fall under TDC as normal, there's no additional line item.
Now let me address the clerk over here. Madam clerk, do you see any conflict here, any problems? Yes, just setting, all we're doing, setting up.
Okay.
All right, just so we're all on the same page here, that's the main thing.
Chair, you recognize.
My question would be if we didn't do it this way, what is the alternative? What would happen if we didn't ask this?
I could probably ask for that. Money come into the general fund?
It would go into the general fund. Yes, all right, thank you.
Ms. Jenkins, just, all you're doing is you're encumbering potential revenue that comes to the county, but any proposals are going to come back to this commission for final approval. And from the program to the services from the county, to the costs, to the impact, to our public ramps and everything, all going to be presented to the county commission for final approval. Today is only about setting up two line items, potential revenue, and then to encumber that money for future use on your film commission.
Correct. And this is all new. There'll be other issues like contracts and things, but once that, for this, for this one particular, after the 17th of December, I'll know more and I just want to have this system in place.
Mr. Chairman.
Chair.
I just want to clarify. So for the public edification, this means that the money from these location fees would come into this particular budget or whatever word you want to use and then it would be used in a fashion that is indicated for those monies instead of for whatever the county would need out of the general funds. Thank you.
Any more? We have our motion, we have our second. Any further board discussion? Anyone? Further board discussion? Okay, we're good over here. Anyone from the audience on this? No opposition, the motion passed.
I'm opposed.
You're opposed, so the vote is four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jenkins, if you don't mind. Chair, we recognize, watch these here. One of the items on my list is, we've got committees and all, we've been working on figuring out how do we do beach nourishment going forward. And one of the first things we have to do is get this thing designed and start getting some monies together to do that. And what I ask is for the, for the coastal engineer, who is Michael Dombrowski out of Destin, to give us a proposal. He has done that. However, what I would like to do is give the attorney and Ms. Jenkins the authority to, if we need to advertise that, Mr. Attorney, or if we need to go ahead and review the proposal and negotiate the proposal, whatever we need to do, Ms. Jenkins and I and others are going to meet with DEP on the 5th.
Third.
On the 3rd of this next month. One of the things, they will be reimbursing 35 percent of whatever this fund is. The other is going to be funded out of the one cent that comes from the TDC tax for beach nourishment. So we're trying to figure out those numbers, trying to figure out where we're going to be, but I'd like to get this board's approval to go ahead and move forward with this because I, what I want to do is not take too long to proceed with all what we need to do on the beach nourishment program so we can find the funding and those type things. Last time the DEP funded 50 percent, but we're, and there's other pots of money. So we're looking to, how do we fund it? But if we go ahead and provide the design, and we'll have a shovel-ready project that when we do find the money, we won't be waiting another six, nine months to a year to get the permits to do the thing. So that's what, that's what I want to do. It's, we've got the funding for the design that's there and DEP's going to do part of that. So if you don't mind, does that all sound clear to you?
It does, and I'll meet with Ms. Jenkins and the administrator, but we'll be, we'll advertise it, move forward. I'll sit with the two of them.
Do you need a motion to that?
To authorize that.
If the board doesn't mind, a motion to start that process of advertising for getting the design.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Jaeger. Second for discussion. We have a second by Commissioner Mclemore. Our discussion, okay, you have the floor. Well, here's what I'll do, I want to piggyback on you just a little bit. You just said you were going to meet with DEP concerning this project, that's fine, I support it. But while you, while you're with DEP, because they play a major role in getting this project done that I want done, is that Indian Lagoon reshell down there. So if you, you know, you want that at a last board meeting, but you'll keep figuring this to help me get that project completed.
I will, and that, a lot of that may come through Restore or Nerdah Funds or some of the other funds that we've got. So yes, there's funding there for that. Franklin County's already got some of the funding. We'll try to extend that funding over to, to Indian Lagoon and put that done in Indian Lagoon also.
Okay. Your second. Man?
I'm good now, Mr. Mclemore.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Any further board discussion? One from the audience? All right, there's no opposition. Motion passed five and oh.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more thing for the TDC if I can. Ms. Jenkins, we've discussed probably for the last year or so this film commission. We talked about ordinance, we talked about setting up some regulations and requirements, and we've referenced this film commission, but there's no formal film commission, if you will. And I'd like to work with Ms. Jenkins and her TDC to at least come back to a structural or a plan. We refer to it, but there is no formal body or commission. All you have is the TDC working on it. So I'd like to have the TDC come back to you all possibly in December with some structure and an outline as to what that entails and to expand upon what a film commission in the county is going to require.
Have us a Gulf County Film Commission, we might get cleaning, come down and shoot a movie here. That'd be great. All right, Ms. Jenkins, you have anything else?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Mr. Whitfield.
Good morning. In the future, I'm going to be giving you a monthly update on our revenue and I'll have a hand I could give to you, but I apologize, I'm having one today. For October 2013, our income was $56,671.57. For October 2014, we're up to $71,474.75, which is up an increase from last year. But we also, on the low side of the year before, 2012, it was $80,000. So you just have to watch it each month and it varies up and down.
All right. You will give.
I will have a report each time, each once a month.
On this report, you'll have the runs.
Right, how many runs, we're up or down and what are revenue coming in.
Well, we have, that's good, Houston, we need that.
And we do have to monitor them, we approved last meeting and we have that truck back in service.
Good, we need that. That's a truck parked right over here.
No, there's one in Weewall.
Weewall, okay, I misunderstood. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Paul.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As the veteran service officer for the past 14 months, I want to recap some of the veteran-friendly projects that you as a united board have accomplished concerning veterans' affairs. You have endorsed, authored, and sent to the legislature a resolution from the local veterans organizations to designate a portion of Highway 71 as the Gulf County Veterans' Memorial Parkway. This was approved by the 2014 legislature and those signs were erected one July 2014. We want to thank you for that. You have accepted and unanimously supported the resolution submitted designating Gulf County as a Purple Heart County, thus showing your honor and support for those brave men and women who have given the ultimate sacrifice for this country. One of you on the board has a brother who actually earned a Purple Heart in Vietnam. Not only that, but in the past, you have renamed the park at Beacon Hill Veterans Park and were instrumental in naming Highway 22 Veterans Highway. As I spoke at the last meeting, in addition to the 1,772 veterans that received compensation in this area, you also have 534 men and women retired from the various branches of service to include the Department of Defense retired civilians that receive also retired pay from the DOD. That amount to Gulf County's current revenue is $1,057,256 a year. That's in addition to the 6.2 million that I spoke about at the last meeting. Now, you know, I've had a conversation with every one of you concerning the veteran service needs. I know that two of you on this board served in the military. I know that at least two of you had a father that was in the Navy. One of you had a sibling that served in Vietnam and sent every piece of a paycheck that he got home to support his family. I want to thank you for not only being receptive to the needs of the veterans in Gulf County, but encouraging in your support of each and every veteran and of the Veteran Service Office. To this end, I would like to request the use of the south parking lot by the courthouse to host the Mobile Vet Center on 16 December 2014. It will be open from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. This vet center has a 38-foot motorhome and you have a pamphlet attached to each one of your letters that are telling you about this home. This vet center provides counseling services to veterans and dependents from all branches of the service. These are the folks that are getting ready to get out of the service or have been out of the service. This is counseling services for dependents that may have lost a loved one, bereavement counseling, PTSD counseling. This is a mobile counseling center that is a separate entity within the VA itself that travels throughout the county and throughout the nation, providing these services to the veterans. Again, I would like to request that I be able to use the south parking lot for that. There will be no expense to the county whatsoever, all the proper news media will be notified and all the public relations will be done accordingly on that day. And again, I thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for all you've done for Gulf County.
Thank you, Joe, and thank you for your service. And I would like to make a motion that we allow the use of the south parking lot.
Thank you.
A motion, second by Commissioner Brian. Any question? You'll hold just a minute. Anyone from the audience? No opposition, motion passed five and oh. Hold just a moment. Mr. Attorney, down the line here. Why, Mr. Paul is here, want to bring up about the industrial park. Fresh here, you want to wait? I'll discuss it now. Ms. Paul, the attorney here has some good information for you and some good news for the
Do I need to remain here?
Yeah, yes, if you don't mind.
Just, actually, about 1:40 AM this morning, Millie Smith sent me an email indicating that she is the representative of Florida Royal Veterans of America. They came before you all this summer and asked for permission to explore leasing the industrial park from you all. And you all voted to authorize the county to move forward with the EDA, propose a lease, send it up to Atlanta. Their general counsel sent that back about three weeks ago, approved the final lease. We provide that to Millie Smith and the Florida Royal Veterans of America. She has now indicated that she's working with their executive director and seeking to secure that five-year approval to lease the industrial park from the county at a competitive lease rate that you all approved of $4,000 a month. So she's asked for a 90-day extension so they can secure that approval, first and foremost, and I need to secure your authorization to do that today. She also indicated early this morning that the Florida Royal Veterans are working and partnering with MC2 Energy Solutions and it's a direct partnership with the Department of Energy. Their founder, Terry Mobbs, would like to come down to the county, meet with county officials and tour the industrial park and meet with the county staff to find available energy credits that he can provide to Florida Royal Veterans as they partner up on the industrial park so that they can provide credits and also do improvements to the industrial park over the five years that they're there. So the second motion I'd asked for is approval to permit both Ms. Smith as well as Mr. Terry Mobbs, the founder of MC2 Energy, to tour the facility with the county staff, to meet with Mr. Joe Paul, the administrator, and myself, and to come back to you with a further update once they've been, received that final approval, to sign the EDA lease for the industrial park for the next five years.
Joe, can you deal with that?
Yes, sir. I actually met Millie Smith first and actually directed her to the county to talk about this. And I'm proud of that because that will employ veterans and that will employ people within Gulf County. We have a lot of veterans that need jobs.
So we need another motion. You want a motion for that? And you just hold serious.
Yes, sir. 90 days and the ability to afford the facility with MC2 Energy Solutions. Great.
So move for those two items, proceed on that project.
Motion by Commissioner Jaeger, second by Commissioner Brian. Any other board discussion on? Audience, done, motion passed five and oh. Joe, let me say this in closing. This board here is very veteran-friendly. Our military, every prayer, you know, just always remember our veterans and active and in. But, you know, every now and then you'll find a disgruntled person. And I think the good outweighs the bad. Thank you for the job you, I thank the board for its support. Thank you, Joe. Joe?
Sir.
I'd just like to thank you personally too for your comments. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My honor. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Manford?
Yes, sir.
Morning.
Morning, how are you all? On the small county grant, I had put in there, purchased a flatbed truck. I'd like your permission to go ahead with that purchase. That's going to be on the small county, small county grant and it'll be from the Florida Sheriff's contract.
So just state contract price?
Yes.
So move to allow Joe to proceed with that.
Thank you.
Motion by Jaeger, second by Commissioner Brian. Any other board discussion on purchases? One from the audience? One from the audience? No opposition, motion passed five and oh.
In our account for detention and correction, I have two work crew vans, 15 passenger vans. I'd like to purchase those out of that account. That'll be on the Florida Sheriff's contract also.
So move to proceed. We actually need more than that, but that's a start.
All right, motion, second by Commissioner Brian. Further board discussion, purchase of these two vans. Anyone from the audience? No opposition, motion passed five and oh.
I also have an F-150 truck. That half of it is going to come out of the small county grant and we're seeking other funding, possibly through mosquito patrol state grant. If not, then I'll come back to you and, and seek some other form of payment. So that's just a heads up.
Okay, relax on that today.
That's just a heads up because I'm going to put it in the small county grant and I have to redo the small county grant in order to accommodate that. Okay. Now, we have a lot of scrap metal. We have scrap metal out of Five Points. We have trailers that we have cut up and used parts on to rebuild other trailers. I would like permission from this board to, to take that scrap metal to one of the dealers and the resulting funds coming from that, put that into our account so that we can use it for whatever purposes we need to use it on.
There's your other truck, Joe. Go ahead, let's go ahead and move forward with this.
Is that something we need to advertise, Mr. Attorney? Or is that something we
I'll get with Joe, I'll look at the value. You just adopted a surplus property policy about two meetings ago for value less than $5,000 to value more than $5,000. So there's set policy on how you can all go forward. If Joe says it's worth two, three grand, then you can go through an informal process of surplusing it. If you approve it and sell it, then he doesn't need to advertise it. I think if the policy states if it's over five, you have to legally advertise it. So we can get with Joe and find out the value and then apply the policy. But if you want to grant permission to surplus, the scrap metal is indicated today, he'll need that to go forward.
I'll get a motion to move this thing forward. Motion by Commissioner Mclemore.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jaeger. Any other board discussion? Anyone from the audience on this? No move on this? No opposition, motion passed five and oh.
Thank you.
Move on this.
Thank you, Joe.
Mr. Paulson, anything? Manuel, anything?
While you're on, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, while you're on, Mark, I just want to recognize that he is a leader at the state level with his duties. He is the, he will be the incoming chair or however you want to say it, or the incoming president of the Mosquito Control Association statewide. So we appreciate your work there, Mark.
That's good. You know, Gulf County serves on a lot of state boards, a lot of state boards. We got the future here in a couple of years, be the president of Florida Association of Counties, sitting right here. He's been over to all county correlations. So Gulf County is known throughout the state of Florida.
Thank you, Mark.
All right, Mark, you have, was that all, Commissioner? Manuel, anything?
Mr. Allen.
All right, Ms. Sumner, good morning to you.
Good morning.
Mr. Paul.
Just one thing, Mr. Chairman.
You have the floor.
We advertised our inmate telephone account last year and we, it expires at next month. We need to extend that. I think we've got up to five one-year extensions. With the attorney's review, I'd like the board to extend that. We're very satisfied and it has no fiscal impact to the board's plate.
This is the first extension of the five.
Yes, sir.
All right, motion by Commissioner Mclemore to extend. Got a second by Commissioner Quinn. Any further board discussion? One from the audience? Opposition, passed five and oh for the
All right.
All right, Mr. Attorney, you want to go now?
Yes, sir.
All right, this time, Chair, recognize our county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to congratulate Commissioner Jaeger on his election to the Florida Association of Counties and his election statewide. I look forward to working with you in that capacity. Also, congratulations to Commissioner Quinn. The first item I have is the Appointment Policy Amendment. As you all recall, from the meetings back in October, I had introduced it in the information packet. At the time, there was a discussion amongst the commission and there was a recommendation at that time to table it and it did not pass. Actually, I don't recall if it was tabled or if it didn't pass. Either way, I reinserted it into your information packet for consideration today. And on page one and two of your information packet, you'll see I have resubmitted it for your consideration. There was another policy on that particular day that you all did approve. This was the other one that was discussed amongst the county commission in the follow-up to the TDC appointments. And if you all recall, there was a recommendation, it was unanimous amongst this commission, that you can have an exception to your term limit policy for committee members of serving two consecutive terms if this commission unanimously supports that nomination to serve beyond the second term. So it's been memorialized, it's been put into a policy form, and it is being submitted and offered again for your consideration per your direction back on October 14th. So I'd be happy to answer any questions amongst the commission.
With that, guys, I probably was the one that brought that up and I'm in support of allowing that. A lot of times you have good people on boards and you don't have others that want to come in at any rate, but I would But I would certainly support this moving forward, but I'd like to hear the rest of, I don't, I don't, I'd rest of the board.
You know how, ma'am, I'm assuming?
Sure.
You know how I feel, Mr. Jaeger, because I didn't support this. And I think we're opening up a can of worms. I think we need to stay with the policy we have, but, you know, that's me, and, and I won't support it today.
I, I would like to proceed with it. I don't know how the rest of the board feels with it, but I think it's an opportunity. It, it at least gives you the opportunity in policy that if you don't, that you've, if you've got somebody that you need to keep in that position, that you can, and if you don't have others that, that actually apply for that, you know, you can maintain what you have. So I'd put that in the form of motion to, to adopt that policy.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion, second by Commissioner Bryan. One discussion on? Question? And? So much. Had to have a five oh vote.
That's right.
I thought you were correct on that. All right. Motion, any other board discussion? Motion, one from the audience on? All right. The opposition?
Yes.
Motion passed four and one. Okay, Mr. Attorney, we're back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item I have is with regards to emergency management. Ashbrit provides disaster assistance relief, and has had a contract with the county for the past five years. The original contract in 2009 provided for a three-year term, and on the expiration of those three-year term, it was renewable for three one-year additional year extensions. This would be the third extension and the sixth year under the contract permitted. And after discussing, discussing with Mr. Nelson, it is his recommendation from the department that the county allow Ashbrit Disaster to extend the contract again going into next 2015. And the second part of the request is also in the motion to authorize that Mr. Nelson and the emergency management be allowed to go back out to bid next summer, develop the RFP, and advertise it so we can come back to you next fall and secure a recommended vendor going forward for a new contract in 2016.
What you're asking is, is it on ask one year plus that advertisement?
Yes, sir.
So move, Mr. Chairman, and thank God we haven't had to use them in the, in the four, five years that we've had them.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Jaeger, second by Commissioner Bryan. One from the audience. Opposition? The motion passed five and oh. I can still have a floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item I have has been contacted by a Brian Driesman. He's an, an asset manager for, an asset manager with Wells Fargo Bank out of Iowa. He's contacted the county with regards to specifically property 5719 Highway 71. It is a county, in the county jurisdiction. Mr. Driesman contacted the county with regards to their REO land donation program through Wells Fargo. He corresponded, we've gone back and forth. In a nutshell, the proposal is that they'd like to donate the land and the home to the county, with the conditions that the home be placed into rehabilitation and provided for affordable or low-income housing through the county. We pulled up the property records, they took the property, the bank took the property, and now are reaching out. They'd like the permission of the county commission for me to work on a donation agreement with them, where you will receive title to the property, with those conditions that the county then would ultimately rehab the property to a condition in which it could be used for affordable housing or low income. And I'll work with Mr. Joe Paul in the ship program, if it's the county's pleasure, to take that property through the donation program and work on it.
Sure. Can I ask, Mr. Attorney, where, where is this located?
Located on Highway 71, south of the bridge, on the west side of the road, about midway the, the group of houses south of the, opposite of the bridge, about midway on the west side of the road. It's across on Highway 71.
I hear four. Thank you. That was just right in that area.
And it would be allowed to use ship funds to rehab?
It would, and, and I would ask as part of your motion, if you're just making conditions on possibly the inspection by Mr. Collinsworth and Mr. Knight, to go out, look at the property. We work with Mr. Paul. As long as it's something that can be rehabbed, and there is something to work with, that they make that approval to the administrator, then we can work with the Wells Fargo, I'll come back in December with that donation agreement, and, and give you their final recommendation, that it is something that is feasible.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, let me recognize.
And as part of that inspection, also, just a check for environmental issues, any kind of issues that could end up being a liability for us as a county. I think it's a, it's a nice gesture, but I would always be somewhat suspect when a bank is going to donate a property. So I think we need to do our due diligence.
So move, move. Okay. Motion by Commissioner Mclemore?
I'll second that with all those caveats.
Yeah, okay. Second by Commissioner Jaeger. Any other board discussion? One from the audience, any questions? All right. Is any opposition? All right. Motion passed five and oh, Mr. Attorney.
Come back on to the night. The next item I have is an outpost design change order. I believe at the September meeting, there was a recommendation for change orders. There was three of them, and I don't know if, Ms. Kapinski has the change order. It's with regards to outpost design. There was a recital of the change orders. This particular change order has been provided by the clerk's office, indicating they needed actual approval and a vote of the commission. It was a change order for $6,000. To want, you can back me up.
It's actually been approved already. It's on page 15 in your minutes. It was already approved.
I'll turn it over to Ms. Norris.
Come over here.
I have some questions about that. Leanna knows more detail about it than I do, so.
Page 15, did you say? All right. Madam Clerk?
There was, there was actually a typo on the change order. I had, I had numbered it two, and it should have been number three, but the amount of $6,000 in the change order was approved. It's in the minutes on page 15, Ms. Jenkins.
Bring it in. I think she brought up permission to work with the attorney to create a change order, not to approve the change order.
All we need to do then is just a motion to approve it. And that's the motion. Second. Motion to approve. Second by Commissioner Jaeger. Any other board discuss? Questions, any discussion from the audience? Opposition? Pass five and oh. All right. Clerk, are you?
We just need it approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item I have is an update and a report to the commission on your litigation reports. Most notably, as I've indicated, when there's active pending litigation, I've advised the commission consistently for the past four years not to comment at your meetings, that's inappropriate, when it's before the, going through judicial process. Most recently, on November 10th, we received an order from Judge Fischel with regards to the writ of certiorari filed by Bo Williams against the county, seeking to reverse and find the variance that you granted on April 8th. And also, there was additional legal challenge to enjoin the county and, and deem it impermissible, and stop the county from granting that variance. What I have is I want to give you the actual order, and as I've gone through this, out of respect for the judicial process and Judge Fischel, when this suit was filed, I had advised you all not to comment through the judicial process, out of respect for the process, both for Mr. Williams and for the judge. Mr. Williams exercises right under the Land Development Regulations. Within 30 days of granting a variance, anyone in the community that has standing has an ability to challenge your granting of a variance. And Mr. Williams properly exercised that right and filed that writ with his attorney. Since then, there's been, obviously, questions of the commission. You've each asked me, saying that, obviously, you've received comments and questions from your constituents with regards to the status on that variance. And as I go back, I, I thank the commission for not commenting. I know it's hard not to speak with the constituents regarding pending litigation, as they want information. There's really three ways to get that information on matters that are before the court. The first is, obviously, you can go to our Land Development Regulations in your comp plan and review those and understand them as a constituent or a member of the community. The second way is to go to the court and review all the PACE program, download all the motions, attend the hearings, and understand the legal arguments that are being made. This is six months of legal pleadings for Mr. Williams' challenge to the variance in Gulf County. So the public is certainly, obviously, always welcome to go to the court website and review all these documents as well. And you can see that it's an exhaustive volume of legal arguments. The third way you can do that in the community is you can go and pay 50 cents and buy our local paper. We had six articles written on our variance challenge, reporting on the challenge and the variance granted by this commission. These are the six articles. As I go through the articles, and I went back through them, the way the public, obviously, receives the information, if they don't go through the pleadings, is they pick up the paper and they read a summary or a report. The troubling part is, as I've gone through it, I actually provided a courtesy copy to our local paper of the county's response back in May, which was over 200 pages. As I provided that response, presumably so that the community would have the county's position and legal arguments with regards to granting that variance on April 8th at your hearing. Despite providing that, it was consistent in the reporting, but it was unfortunately incomplete because it didn't provide the county's position. To compound that, you all, as a commission, can't comment on it, and out of respect for the judicial process, I certainly do not want to offer any bias and speak to something that's before Judge Fischel. Now Judge Fischel has rendered a ruling on November 10th, and the most recent article, again, which was consistent, stated that the variance action was illegal. That's the headline.
Say that again.
The variance action is illegal. So you have six articles dating back to April from our local paper that the community wants and reads, obviously, for the information on the quarter. The county's position hasn't been stated. I've asked you all not to comment on it, as you have not commented on any pending litigation. Now that the matter's been resolved, the judge has sent the variance back to you. And the arguments that were presented by the county, the judge found and agreed on some of the positions, and found for Mr. Williams on others. Most notably, the challenge, and I'm going to go through the judge's order, and I'm going to go through step by step. And once the complaint was filed, there were several legal arguments that were presented by Mr. Williams and his attorney, challenging the county's authority to grant this variance. The county, obviously, put its position forward, and the court agreed with the county's position that you are the final authority, and it was not improper for you all to grant a variance, but the PDRB could not hear it. And as you all recall, on March, in March, the PDRB had conflicts of interest. They sent the matter to you, and upon you receiving it, you had a hearing on the 25th of March, at which time it was tabled for further comment from staff, and you had a second public hearing on April 8th. At that April 8th hearing, the planner offered comment, you had the applicant, you had the public, and the commission all were offered comment. After hearing that on the second public hearing, this county commission approved the variance and granted a conditional variance to the applicant. Within 30 days after that, as I indicated, the, Mr. Williams had a right under your Land Development Use Regulations to challenge it, and he did that within 30 days. I'm going to go through the legal challenges so that the commission and the public understand exactly what the challenge was, and then what the judge's entire ruling was, finding both for the county and for the applicant, oh, I'm sorry, for Mr. Williams. The first one, as I indicated, was a challenge saying that you, as a county commission, were improper in taking up the variance request. The judge in his first page of his 12-page ruling actually indicated that, in fact, you were the proper authority to take up the variance request. There was a challenge with regards to, and comment with regards to, the county's granting of the minor replat. The judge commented on the minor replat process, spoke to the county's Land Development Regulations, and offered comment on it, but did not issue a ruling, as that was not part of the legal argument, but simply a statement of fact from Mr. Williams. There was also a challenge that Mr. Williams had standing to challenge your variance. The county argued that he did not have standing, as his property did not have a line of sight to the subject property. He argued he was a few hundred feet from the property. The county argued that it was impossible to have a line of sight from his property to the subject property. The judge agreed with Mr. Williams and indicated that he does have standing, that he had an opportunity to challenge, and therefore he considered the rest of the legal argument. The other argument from Mr. Williams and his counsel was that the county did not file proper due process. And in due process, it is a, it is a fair opportunity for anyone in the public to be heard before you, before you make a decision. That is the, in essence, the definition of a due process. The county advertised through the planning department in March for a hearing both before the planning board, and then a subsequent hearing before the county commission, as it always does. That's the common practice that the county follows. The advertisement ran on March 13th in your local paper. It's a weekly paper. The planning board met a few days after that, and then the county commission heard it 13 days after the advertisement. The court and judge deemed that those 48 hours that were denied Mr. Williams was a denial of his due process. So despite the fact that Mr. Williams and the county argued had the ability to attend both the planning board meeting and both public hearings, and have the opportunity to be heard, the judge still found that the 48 hours in lack of notice to Mr. Williams was sufficient denial of due process. The other finding by Judge Fischel was that the county's conduct in running the meeting on April 8th did not give everyone an adequate opportunity to be heard, and that it was not a quasi-judicial setting, was the argument from Mr. Williams. The county argued that, in fact, it was a quasi-judicial setting, that every one of your public hearings that you conducted to grant variances are a quasi-judicial hearing. And the judge, in fact, found in his order that the public hearing on April 8th was a quasi-judicial hearing, consistent with the way the county's done it the past four years, and then upon review of the historical granting of variances, was consistent with the way the county conducted those hearings for the previous 14 years. So for the past 18 years, you've conducted those quasi-judicial hearings in the same manner. In review and consultation with your former county attorney, the only quasi-judicial hearing where there was sworn testimony in those 18 years was one hearing with regards to a bond hearing, nothing with regards to a variance. So as we move forward, on April 8th, you granted the variance, and the county granted that, and has been challenged. The other legal challenge in, was with regards to ex parte communications. The judge cited that the county, in taking ex parte communications, you should all disclose who you've spoken to with regards to the land use application when you have the actual public hearing before you. Those were all submitted to the court, the writings that received by the county as public record, and were submitted to the judge. The writings that the county received were all in opposition to the variance, and they were all provided to the judge's public record. The county argued that the commissioners certainly can't hang up on its constituents. When you receive calls from your constituents, you'll certainly hear them voice their opinions, but not to offer one in response. There is, the county argued also that there's case law that indicate that the county commission should not embrace or welcome such communications, but they certainly can't avoid it. As you all live in a community of 13,000 folks, you go to the Piggly Wiggly, the IGA, you go to the ballgame on Friday nights, you go to church, wherever you may be, you'll have people come up and talk to you about various county issues. And we respectfully encourage you now and the future to simply tell the person that you cannot discuss it. And as we move forward and we take Judge Fischel's order, we will respect the rule of law, will respect the judge's order. He has indicated that the variance that was illegal was a technical denial of due process by those 48 hours. In addition to that, that the April 8th hearing did not give everyone an adequate opportunity to be heard, despite the fact that Mr. Williams was given that opportunity to speak. opportunity to speak in opposition to it. What the county's going to do going forward is take that rule, and, in essence, Judge Fischel commented at the conclusion that it was not unreasonable nor improper for the county commission to hear it due to the conflicts of the PDRB, and that it essentially comes back to the county and the applicant to move forward. We've already received notice from the applicant that they'll reapply for this variance, and the county will move forward accordingly. I've met with the planning department and reviewed both the county's LDR and the notice requirements. What we'll do is we'll review best practices throughout the state for comparable counties of this size, and we'll begin to implement a procedure and a process for the county to move forward with regards to quasi-judicial hearings. Despite the fact that the county, in the last 18 years, has conducted them, the applicant that came before the county commission for the past 18 years on variances has never had someone challenge or come to the podium and assert their right to have cross-examination or to test and challenge the evidence that's submitted before you all. This was the first time the county followed the precedent it had in the 18 years prior, and Judge Fischel has indicated that those 15 days are an essential element of our law and that we will follow it and we will notice accordingly. I've already met with the planner and Mr. Lowery, the planner in waiting, and what we've done is I've made some recommendations on how to go forward in terms of public notice. The county will put it on the county courthouse, county will put the notice on the administration building, the county will put it on the county website. There is public notice, and it will always be done 15 days in advance. In addition to that, there is now a notice permanently affixed to both the courthouse and the county administration building, indicating that all hearings that come before you as a commission in final determination of variances will be a quasi-judicial hearing. In essence, what that means going forward is that you all will have the clerks swearing anybody that comes before you, and they'll have an opportunity to test the evidence that's submitted. You, as the body, will be the quasi-judicial body. You, in essence, are the judges. You will take the facts, you will apply the law as we provide it, you'll hear staff recommendations, you'll hear from the applicant, you'll look at the written materials, you'll look at any presentation, you'll hear from any opponents in the community. Everyone will be sworn in. The opponents will have an opportunity to test the validity and the authenticity and credibility of the evidence that's submitted. You'll hear from the staff on recommendations, they'll provide the PDRB's recommendations, and then you ultimately will all have a decision to make as you have in the past. But we'll go through additional steps per the judge's order, and we'll do that. The only time that we will not do that is when all the parties waive that right to a quasi-judicial hearing. And so, in the past and the last 18 years, you've had quasi-judicial hearings, just as Judge Fischel said, on April 8th was a quasi-judicial hearing. It's just in how you conduct yourselves in that hearing, which is swearing everyone in and taking that evidence. The additional best practices that I'll be working with the planning department over the holiday is coming up with a template. It'll be a questionnaire form, providing you with land development regulations for variances, and all variances that come before you in the future will be then asked of you of which criteria it meets. So, I'll go through the land development regulations, I'll ask you all for an affirmative vote. If it's not passed, then it doesn't meet that necessary criteria for variance, I'll move on to the next one. Following that, we'll ask for a final vote. The county planner will take your votes and memorialize them in a final conditional approval. Consistent with your LDRs, then the public will have 30 days on any variances, as they've had in the past, to challenge it, and the way they challenge it, they go to court, just as Mr. Williams did in this particular circumstance. The procedure and the process will be introduced to you, ideally, at your first meeting in January, and it'll become policy for the county to move forward. As I indicated before, the county had argued that when you come to the podium, the public has to simply assert their right to ask these questions. They need to assert their right to question the authenticity of evidence, and they have the need to assert their right to question the applicant. The county had argued that Mr. Williams did not assert that right, he simply opposed the variance, and the only time the right was asserted was after the fact, when he consulted with his attorney. This is the first time the county has had this challenge in terms of quasi-judicial. We will conduct the county's hearings accordingly going forward, and that is the findings of the court. Again, I'll meet with Mr. Lowery and work with Mr. Richardson, and you'll already see the notices posted on the courthouse and the administration building, as well as the quasi-judicial notice that'll be permanently affixed. I'll be happy to entertain any questions from the commission with regards to the judge's order and how the county will proceed.
Okay. Any questions from any of the...
I have...
You're right.
Thank you. First of all, my guess is the, Mr. Attorney, the box that you held up probably containing the LDRs and the comp plan, which would account for quite a few of the volume of the paperwork in that box, which was, I would assume, submitted to the court. And I would like to clarify that the petition for the review of certiorari for the public's knowledge is a review of the decision of this board. And it is appropriate, as our attorney has stated, for a member of the community to ask for that review. And I don't believe that this board should take such an adversarial view to someone in the community asking for a review of the decision of this board, and it is the appropriate place to go to the circuit court to have the judge review the decision of this board. Now, you have asked us not to speak about this decision, although an order has been issued by the judge. And I find that this speech that you have just given in this public meeting is inappropriate. I think that your critique of the press, the local press, is inappropriate. I will refer you to the First Amendment of the Constitution on that one and move on. The judge's ruling said that the procedure followed by this board was inappropriate. And whether this board has done an inappropriate procedure for 18 years or for one week, it's still inappropriate. We regularly vote on items every meeting that are not on an agenda, that are not noticed to the public. That, too, is inappropriate. And just because we continue to do it every meeting, it doesn't make it right. The public doesn't know what we're doing. I think that your interpretation of the judge's order is inappropriate. The judge does not consider all circumstances in granting a variance. It's not his position. Everything is not placed before him. He considers the record. So, he stated that what this board did was inappropriate and sent it back, because maybe there is a path for this applicant to take, but the path that he took was wrong. But what I don't understand is why, Mr. Attorney, I don't know if this is your position, that you're representing, a position of a member of this board or members of this board, or the position of someone outside of this board. But it's surprising to me that this much time has been spent on twisting this judge's order for this variance application that, on its face, was flawed in its procedure, that, on its face, was inappropriate to be granted, that was based on a minor replat that violated our own LDRs that was granted by our county planner. Many people came here to speak and were ignored by this board. I was cut off by this board in making my argument. Mr. Smith has the opportunity to come back through the process, but I've never seen this kind of time spent on any other applicant for a variance that was denied. I think this whole discussion, I'm actually shocked that our attorney, our county attorney, is taking this position. You are here making an argument as if you are in the courtroom. And I want us to remember that the people who challenged this variance are part of this community. We represent them as well as Mr. Smith.
Mr. Chairman? May I?
Yes.
And I thank the commissioner, because she brought up a couple of good points. The first one is, my litigation report's not a speech, Commissioner. My job's to report to you all on the judge's order. The second item you indicated is I stated that the county commission should not speak with regards to the order. The order's been issued by the judge. I asked you not to speak on pending litigation, and so, my comment was with regards from November 10th on, after a judge issues an order, I've not ever recommend to any of you commissioners that you shouldn't speak on something that's already been resolved by the court. Third item is, this is the comp plan and the LDR. So, no, it's not but a fraction of that paper I just showed you. I'm not sitting here arguing, and you said my critique of the local press. I do have an expectation, I guess, as the attorney for the county, that I would be contacted with regards to comments on the county's position. I took the steps of providing the county's position to the local press. I've never been contacted once in six months. I do ask you all not to comment on it, because it's my job to represent you five commissioners. I understand that you represent your districts. I represent this commission. This commission made a decision on April 8th. I wasn't at that meeting, Commissioner.
I know you weren't.
Okay. But the commission made a decision, and I represent this commission. This commission made a decision to grant the variance, and my job's to defend that position, and it's exactly what I did. Okay? And so, today, when I restate the order and I give the county's position, I'm providing the judge's full order, and I'm also providing the public and this commission the county's full position, because it hasn't been reported. And so, it's not a critique, it's a statement of consistency in the press, and I have all the pleadings and I have all the articles, and nowhere in there does it provide the county's position. So, I provided that to the commission today, and I've also provided it to the public. You spoke as to the minor replat. I'm glad you brought that up, Commissioner. The judge spoke on the minor replat and indicated, in fact, the LDRs do allow and provide a provision and says that the LDRs do contemplate the actions taken by the planner. As I indicated to you all on March 25th, that is not a decision before this commission, and it wasn't a challenge legally. The judge touched on it, spoke on it, but rendered no opinion on the minor replat. The county commission has a land development regulation. It was granted in December. There's 30 days to appeal it. That 30 days expired. So, and I said before on April 22nd that I respect your legal opinion, but the county has the law. There was an appeal process, it expired, and that moved forward. The county planner granted it because it was permitted under the LDR. So, that wasn't an issue before the court. The only issue before the court was the granting of the variance. And then, you brought up the rule of law. The judge looked at three issues, which was the due process, one, the second, that they followed the law in Gulf County, and the third, that there was substantial credible evidence that supported your decision. The judge commented and ruled on the first two and said that there was not due process and that the county did not follow the quasi-judicial proceeding. The judge also commented specifically that the court is only to consider those items before the commission and not reweigh the evidence in the record or substitute its own judgment for that of the commission, but only determine whether the decision was supported by competent and substantial evidence. The court also commented that it has no power to enter judgment on the merits of the controversy under consideration nor direct the county to enter a particular order of judgment. The judge decided and stated in his order that, in fact, he's not ruling on the credibility of the evidence. He simply commented on the due process and the way the proceeding was held on April 8th. I was not at that meeting. The judge critiqued the way the county conducted its hearing and also said that there wasn't sufficient notice. But he also said that he's not going to rule on the actual merits of what was presented to you all, and he states that in his order. So, the judge offers no comment on the actual credibility of the evidence. He simply says the county didn't provide notice and that the hearing is quasi-judicial, should have been afforded everybody an opportunity to speak. We'll have that hearing, we'll put those safeguards in place, and we're going to conduct the county variance hearings going forward that way from here on.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I did not state that the judge ruled on the merits of the case. I discussed that he ruled on the procedure that was followed and that he does not consider every avenue that can be taken in applying for the variance. Based on the information that you have provided to me, I can't speak for the other county commissioners, that the volume of paperwork that you've presented is in great contrast to what I have received from you, but I'm not here to argue that with you. Also, this litigation report that you are referring to, that you're providing today, I've been on this board for two years, and I've sat in that audience for many years prior to that. I have not experienced this lengthy of a litigation report prior to this time. You were not at that meeting, but you did submit a lengthy memo in regards to what we were considering, and you did play a role in this variance. And that minor replat, the second minor replat, that was granted, although the judge, it was not before the judge to be considered, and it is appropriate for the planner to be the deciding, the decision-maker in reviewing that minor replat. Our LDR specifically prohibited a relative from doing the second minor replat. And even if it was a total stranger coming in and doing the second minor replat, we allowed them to create a lot with 12-foot of road frontage on Highway 98. And we all know that the amount of property that is being considered in that minor replat is beach property down by the water. There is a build line that is produced, that is created along the beach. That is the land that needs to be considered. So, Mr. Ellis Smith has to build a 15-foot white house, and he needs to be nine feet into our setback with our park. The people of District 3 and the people of this county who enjoy Veterans Park and the veterans and the visitors to this county that enjoy that park, they don't want a house built along, right along the property line to the park. And if it was your property or any person on this board's property and someone was asking this board to allow their neighbor to build six inches from their property line, they would be up in arms. And we should have done the same thing for that park. We owe it to the people of this community, and that's what I'm stating.
Chairman, may I?
Just briefly.
I don't recognize you.
We can probably debate the merits and all that for hours. I appreciate the report. That's your job as a county attorney, is to report to this board, and your job is to defend this county and the decisions that we make. And I appreciate the report, I'm glad you give it, because, obviously, the whole story has not been spoken, and the whole story is construed in many ways. But I appreciate the report. I appreciate you reporting on the judge's decision and letting this body know what the legal ease of all that is. I'm not an attorney and don't want to speak to any of the other things, but this will come back before the board. I, as you, were not here when this decision was made. I was testifying before Congress on that day. But I appreciate the report, that is your job, that's what the county pays you to do, and this board has always... Let me make one more statement. We were just at the Florida Association of Counties meeting this week. One of the six-term commissioners from one of the counties made a comment that is very relevant. Your county attorney is there to protect your county and protect you. And when you hire him, if you're not confident in him, then you need to hire someone else. But if you're confident in him, you need to go with him. Even when, as far as the stating, he hasn't always agreed with his county attorney, but he has never voted against his county attorney's decision because he hired him in the first place. So, I appreciate all the things that you've done, that's your responsibility, that's your requirement, and I won't get into the bait of the merits of the applicant or anything else, but I appreciate it.
All right. Do you have anything? I have one thing, then we'll move on, and I'm going to go back to you. Mr. Attorney, we went through the process, it was a lengthy process. The judge ruled, yes, he ruled, and the law of the county, with some, what's the word, technicalities, he ruled again. But I want to go on record, I'm not going to slap this circuit judge. I respect his decisions, and I'm going to follow his decisions. I will not, I can't speak to everybody else, but I'm not going to question this judge's decisions.
Mr. Chairman, just three final comments, just on, first, the law that we're speaking of. I don't make these decisions. You five commissioners make these decisions, and you grant this variance. I told you on March 25th that that was a decision for you all to make. I submitted it in the memorandum with the planner, that the decision before you all, that you all vote on, is whether or not the facts and you apply the county's law warrant a variance. Again, you make that decision. The second point is, you all, excluding Commissioner Quinn, adopted this law. You're the ones that put this law in place in June of 2013. So, you, as a commission, set the laws in this county, you four adopted this law. The final comment was with regards to the technicality you mentioned, Chairman. Again, county made a decision on April 8th, you make that decision, and you'll make all the decisions going forward with the variance. I'll provide you with the LDRs and the comprehensive plan. Planner will make his recommendations with regards to the application, and then you will apply what you hear in an application. apply what you hear in an application to the law that you all adopted. The technicality you speak of, the judge, despite the fact that Mr. Williams had an opportunity to attend each of those meetings, despite the fact that he had an opportunity to come to that podium and speak, and you gave him an opportunity to speak in opposition to it, and you gave other people in the community an opportunity to speak in opposition to it, the judge still found that there was a denial of due process in that the meeting wasn't noticed sufficient for 13 days versus 15, and also the way that the meeting was conducted, and that you could not test the evidence, and that wasn't asserted by anybody that came to the podium. The county's going to go and make that an affirmative position of the county going forward, and we will give everyone an opportunity to test that going forward, from your next variance going forward. And consistent with this variance application, I watched the meeting I wasn't at, I attended the meeting on the 25th, and you afforded those folks the opportunity to speak that came from the public, and I anticipate that you'll continue to do that. You didn't deny anybody the opportunity to speak from the public and come to the podium. And that was argued before the judge. There was no denial of due process. The judge felt differently, and we will move forward accordingly.
All right. Is it anything else? Have you got anything else, Mr. Attorney? That's it. Mr. Butler, we take your time. We're going to move to you.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. I'm nursing a scratch to eyeball this morning, and I recommend you don't look at it, or hurt your eyeballs. First thing, I gave you a copy of the proposed paying class study contract consulting services agreement you got in front of you in conference last week, and Denise sent this to us, and pretty much what this does, it ties down what you've already done, you already awarded contract to this firm, Evergreen Solutions LLC, to do the paying class study for the county. This is a proposed contract. It ties down the amount that we agreed upon in the scope of work. I recommend you with the attorney review and his approval to approve this contract. We have it dated 1st of December, and it would be great to go in and get started on it.
Let me move forward with this, Mr. Chairman. All right. Motion by Commissioner, back a moment, second by Commissioner Jaeger. Any other board discussion on this contract? Wanting the audience, opposition, motion.
opposed.
Motion passed. Four to one.
Good, Chairman. Next item is, we had, I think, TDC, we had a very successful power program during the summer with beach and bistro and cleanup of the beach and parks. That program has been terminated, but it was successful, and there's been some conversation about someone heading that up, like a director, or someone heading up that effort to, as time goes on, come January, there will be additional TDC funds available. And if the board is okay with the idea, we'll go forward with procuring, soliciting someone to head up the group to do, if you were to call it a parks and recreation director, or whatever you may want to call it, but someone to head that crew up to make sure we have beaches cleaned and an unbelievable amount of material at TDC removed from the beach and the parks this year. But if the board is okay with the idea, we'll move forward with soliciting someone or asking proposals from those interested in handling that job. And then, once if we do that, and once that's on board, then we will put the, we also solicit an application to those that's willing to come in and be, whether it be park cleanup or beach cleanup or wherever. We may fine tune what we did during the summer to more fit what we're doing, but my request and recommendation to you now would be, do you agree for us to go forward with something in the form of a parks and recreation director paid by TDC funds?
All right. It'll be under the umbrella of the TDC.
Paid by TDC funds, and we'll figure out the, what's logical, and how, where this person will answer, but the main focus of this person will be able to handle the day-to-day operations or the cleanup people.
Mr. Chairman, can I comment on that? I've had a little bit of discussion with the City of Port St. Joe, and I'm for this. But City of Port St. Joe is interested in doing something themselves, I think, and in talking to some of those. At least, I mean, it will fall under the TDC, but it might be worth just having this discussion with the City of Port St. Joe to see if they're interested in partnering.
Is that something for Mr. Butler to do?
Absolutely, for Mr. Butler to do, but that's going to fall under the TDC. But I'm supportive of it.
Want to add something while we're on this?
Well, you need a motion to proceed.
That'd be great.
So moved to proceed without process.
I have a motion to proceed. Second. Second by Commissioner Mclemore. Any board discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Recognize, Commissioner Bryant.
I just want to make sure that I understand this correctly. What we're discussing here is creating a new position, a parks and recreation director, paid by the TDC with a defined job description, not in the agenda, something we're going to create right here as it's placed on the board. Am I correct? We're going to advertise and...
We are developing a job description. Had some conversation with Ms. Jenkins yesterday, something that would fit TDC, something that will do what TDC needs done, and that's the, in general, we have some, at least two or three, that we can massage, two or three job descriptions we can massage and make it look, Jennifer's already done some work on what that position should look like.
So is this a motion to go forward with creating a job description and the parameters of the position, or are we approving a position here today?
It would be to allow us to move forward with procuring someone to head up, if we were to call it parks and recreation, that may not be the correct title for the job at the time, but someone to procure, someone allowed to proceed forward with soliciting applications from those interested in being a parks and recreation director, and it'll be a new position.
Okay. So if I understand correctly, this motion will allow us to move forward and hire some individual for this position that we don't have a job description for, that was not noticed, that was not in the agenda, but we're going to go ahead and hire.
Let me just speak to that a little bit. I think all of us individually have had conversations, I know I have, and I don't know everybody. I make mistakes all the time. I've had conversations with the staff on this particular position, and I think we can continue to have those conversations, and I think you can have those conversations also, if you want input on the description of what this position should be, but at the end, they have to fit in the guidelines that the TDC can expend those funds off.
And what about the public? Have they had the opportunity to have discussions? I mean, the public didn't know anything about this until right now.
I think that's the responsibility of this board. I think that's what the public elect us for, is to start that process, and during that process, any public member would have an opportunity to discuss that. But I mean, that's the, what this board is required to do is not to vet out every issue that comes before this board, but they actually elect us to make those decisions. If we don't make them right, they're going to unelect us. But I think, and there's an awful lot of cases that we need to make those decisions, and we don't, you know, I mean, we're elected to do that.
Well, Commissioner Jaeger, I will respectfully disagree with you. Under Florida statute, we are required to be open and to provide notice to the public of the decisions that we are considering and making. That's in the statutes. That is the sunshine law. So I will disagree with you there. I just want to make sure I understand, and that the public understands what we're doing as a board here now.
And since you said open, let me just respond to that. We are open. That's what we're doing here today. That's what we're, we're making this decision today. So I respectfully disagree with that, but at any rate, I'm ready to move forward.
Got a motion by, you made the motions. You have a board discussion, wanting the audience. The opposition.
I'm opposed.
Pass. Go on.
Mr. Chairman, next item, and this is probably going to require a little bit of discussion. And I don't want to steal Mr. Jaeger's thunder, but before last, he had a meeting with the new congressperson's aide, staff, and we're talking Cobra, and I'll let Mr. Jaeger handle that when it gets his time. But at some point in time, we're going to have, we did lose our congressman that was carrying the water for us on Cobra, and we gained a new congressperson, Graham Graham. Mr. Jaeger, I know he had reached out to, and others have reached out and had a good long conversation with Graham's aide, but, and the point I get into is, our lobbyists, at some point in time, we're going to have to talk about lobbyists. Is it appropriate for us to continue on the wet route we're going? We're paying $4,000, $4,500 a month for lobbyists, and at some point in time, we may determine, if we don't have someone to carry water for us, we very well may not, I mean, at the Congress level, may not need lobbyists in the form that we have now. And it may not be determined here today at this meeting, but I think we need the conversation as we go forward, because we just don't need lobbyists if we're not going anywhere with it.
Let's go ahead and speak to that, if you don't mind. Sure. All right. So I brought this on my list, but we've done this for about a year and a half to two years with our general lobbyists, where they've got us a long way. They've actually got a bill to the, to committee, testified before that committee. But I think there is a time that we need to pause, and this election probably brought that time on, for us to pause and review, and possibly even, I think, Mr. Attorney, we've got a 30-day out, I think, on that particular contract. I think probably is a good time to go ahead and issue that out, that 30-day out. I have met with Congresswoman Graham's staff. They seem very respectful and understand the process and what we could do. I mean, we've met from 3:30 with the CCA, with Ms. Hardman, till about 7:30, 8 o'clock that night, so they understand the process. I do think probably we ought to send that letter to try to save the county a few dollars while we're reviewing whether we need another specific lobbyist, or whether we need to define that down a little bit more. So if the board's okay with that, I would suggest that we let the attorney send that 30-day out letter to Ferguson, our federal lobbyist, and let's save a little bit of money while we're in this transition process, and we'll probably come back to you after the first of the year and say, we either need to narrow the scope and advertise for another lobbyist, or we need to move forward without the lobbyist, or we need to just save that money for a lawsuit. So if the board will allow, I think I'd put, in the form of a motion, for the attorney to send that 30-day out letter to Ferguson, and let's move forward for the next couple of months and figure this thing out. Save a few dollars. All right? So I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Your motion? Yes, sir. All right. I hear a second to the motion. Thank you. Second by Commissioner Quinn. Any further board discussion? Wanting the audience on this Ferguson, Dr. Hardman.
Thank you. Pat Hardman, Coastal Community Association. As Warren says, we met with, we had a big meet, we're trying to put a restoration committee in effect out on the Cape. And I would support Warren's recommendation to go ahead at this point and terminate the lobbyists. For all intent and purposes, the bill that we have, that in Congress at this point with the election process, will no longer be there. It'll simply die. And we need, you know, $4,500 is a good bit of money for me, and I don't see any reason to wait and send another $4,500, another $4,500, when we know that that process, even though I supported what we did 100%, we move forward. We've got foot in the door with Representative Graham's group. I think we're going to get support there, but we're not going to get legislative support in terms of a bill at this point. So I would recommend, let's save some money. We may need it later on otherwise. Thank you all for your help.
Thank you, Don Hardman. Thank you. Any further discussion? Any more discussion for this? Pass by, I don't know. Mr. Attorney, were you all over the document?
Mr. Chairman, just a piece of cleanup. The board had at place representing Gulf County on the consortium, Mr. Jaeger, then Commissioner Smiley, and myself. Mr. Smiley's gone, so just for cleanup, we really need at least two. And if it's okay with the board, that way, for all the paperwork for the consortium, that can be cleaned up if we remove Mr. Smiley.
And we'll, Don, we still have two, right? I mean, you're an alternate. So we still have two. Okay. Do you need a motion to remove Mr. Smiley?
That'd be great. That way, we send a consortium letter saying this has been done.
Okay. So moved to...
Motion here. Second. Remove former commissioner. Any more board discussion? Anyone from the audience? Opposition? Another motion passed by, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, sort of good and bad being in the line on discussion. Good or bad, a lot of things get taken care of what gets to me. Well, I just want to re-say again, congratulations to Commissioner Quinn. Mr. Quinn and my oldest child, same age, and we're proud of you on board. And congratulations to Commissioner McDaniel. You have done a great job. Congratulations, Mr. Jaeger. You are soon to be, well, you know it, you're going to be president of the Florida Association of Counties, which is huge for Gulf County. Our focus on Gulf County. Everyone, every commissioner in the state knows where Gulf County is. That didn't exist one time. And also, it was mentioned before with Mark, for Gulf County to have a young man, as Mark, soon to be the president of the Florida Master Control Association, that's typically a job reserved for someone who's been in the job for decades, and probably had a lot more schooling than Gulf County can afford. But in order for Mark to be in that position, that is great for Gulf County to be able to tell the association small county problems and get it so oriented to fit small counties, and that's huge. I just want to say congratulations to all of you guys. That's all I have.
All you have. Okay. Now we'll move to the board business. Commissioner Bryant, let's start everything for the board today.
The only thing that I would like to just get an update on, and a lot of folks in my district have asked me about this, and kind of a feel for where we are with Leave No Trace and beach ordinance. I know that it's something that's a work in progress, but if we could just give some kind of an update.
Consistent with our past practice, we hope it's going to affect land use, and under the ordinance and statute, we're going to advertise it twice. Ideally, we're going to have our first public hearing, if we can get it, in final form for your December 9th meeting, 10 days prior, and it needs to be legally advertised, and then the second will be a public hearing in January, either the first meeting cycle or the second, after the community has a month to give you their feedback on the actual content of the Leave No Trace in its final form. So we're going to have a month in between the first public hearing and the second. And that's the goal right now as it stands.
And another update on the White City Park boat ramp issues, if we can have an update there?
Sure. Great American Insurance offered the county $7,000, as I reported, and change. The county commission, at the last meeting, instructed the county to move forward. We heard from the adjuster. The adjuster sent out their engineer to look at the structural damage and compare it to our structural report, and was waiting on a report back from their engineer. They heard back last Thursday from their engineer that they, is their opinion that it was not caused by the barge or structural damage, and they're not changing their offer to the county. So I notified them that the county denied their $7,000 offer. The county public works has already been authorized to move forward with the remediation work, and we've been authorized to move forward with a suit against the pre-ult chief incorporated. And we've notified their insurance carrier of that notice to proceed, and there's no point in further communication. They wanted to discuss it, their $7,000 offer. And unless the county administrator provides me other instructions, we're moving forward with the notice of the suit against the barge operator.
And I know the sheriff isn't here, so we may not have an answer to this, but do you know if the barge operator was cited for hitting the...
Off the top of my head, I do recall seeing he was cited for reckless and careless, and it wasn't the sheriff. I think it was Fish and Wildlife that cited him for reckless and careless operation of his barge. So he was cited, received a citation.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Uh, yeah, a couple of things. Let me first bring up, um, South Gulf County Fire Department. We've been meeting a, a, a lot of times with, with this group. They're an expanding group, and they're taking on expanded duties, it seems like, uh, daily. They've responded over three hundred calls, uh, first responder. They don't have a whole lot of fires, just like any, any other fire department, but they've become a part of the community. And, and they're kind of isolated down there, so they're different animal than anybody else. But, uh, I think what I just want to do is inform the board, maybe in the form of a motion, but they want to use part of their funds for a part-time assistant that's kind of going to, uh, maintain the building. I say maintain the building, not necessarily maintain the building, but do some things there, uh, paperwork and all those kinds of things. They want to expend the funds that they have to do that. And, uh, I don't know if that needs to be in a form of a motion, but, uh, I just want them to be able to work with the attorney, that they go through the proper procurement that, that we have any. And it's a part-time thing, and it may even wind up, uh, that they do it through their five oh one C three as a different way, but I think they want to start that process. They have said it'd probably be a, a ten to fifteen thousand dollar expenditure, but, uh, it's something that they need because they're, they're, they're unique to any of the rest of us, to, to the rest of the, uh, community as far as the fire department. Uh, they do water rescues, they do, you know, they do, uh, beach patrol, they do a lot of different things for that community, and they do first responder for Houston. So, uh, I'm good, they're all, they're using their fire department funds. I just wanted to let the board be aware, Mr. Attorney, do I need a, a motion for you to proceed to help them, or?
You've instructed me to do so, I'll work with them.
Yeah, that'll be good. I just wanted the rest of the board to, to realize that they're fixing to do something down there. It's a little bit different than everybody else, but just wanted to bring that before the board. On the, on the next issue, I want to talk about the legislative process. Used to, this board, and, and we'd do it through staff, mostly we'd, we'd do SEABR requests, which, which is, uh, asking for a request into the budget, into the state budget. Uh, each county would do that. Now, over the, the past few years, when, when the legislature didn't have no money, they kind of, uh, got out of that, uh, request, but they're back into, uh, asking the county to at least respond officially to what the request. Now, I've met with Senator Mufford and, and Representative Bashir's, uh, and talked about some of the things that I knew. One of the things was, um, uh, four million dollars for a pilot project on, on Cape San Blas. Uh, one was the, uh, continuing the support of the, uh, Port Authority for the dredging. The first twenty million dollars was in last year's budget, which would go through July, the next will be in, uh, you know, there would need to be some more funds there, so we've, we've requested them verbally to them for that. But, but there's something, if there's something in any of your districts, or there's something that comes to your mind, either get with Don, or get with Don, uh, but let's make sure that, uh, we get the right request in, uh, before we get too far down this road, and they've had committee meetings and we can't get anything in the, in the budget. Don, you have anything to add to that?
If could, we can put it back in person, go on the ninth.
That'd be great.
And then that way we have plenty of time. Session starts probably early March.
Right.
And probably, uh, Commissioner McMoore's Sheldon program could be one of those items.
Absolutely. Yeah. Um, also, I, I, I mentioned meeting with them. I met with, uh, uh, actually Senator Mufford requested I come up, and Eugene Rafield, the Chairman of the Port Authority, we met up there in Tallahassee a few weeks ago. We had Enterprise Florida, we had St. Joe Company, we had both Representative Bashir's and Senator Mufford, uh, we had, uh, the Ports Council. We had about twenty people around that. We had DEO, we had about twenty people around the table talking about what's going on with this port. And it's the first time that we've actually sat down at the state level and talked about that. So, the, the folks in Tallahassee are, are very, uh, familiar with, with the, uh, what's going on with the port. We continue to get their, uh, support. FDOT has the twenty million dollars in the budget to start that process of dredging when we get the permits all, uh, with that. But there's a, a great relationship up there right now, and the funding's been great. As all of you know, because many of you have, have projects in your district, we got nine million dollars from FDOT, uh, this year for, for road funding. So, uh, we've got really good support at the state level, and we want to make sure that we recognize those folks, Senator Mufford, Representative Bashir's, for the work that they do. They've worked on, and I think Pat wants to speak to this, and I'm not going to steal her thunder, but they've worked on several different issues, uh, even some with the EDC on our, uh, uh, issue with Verizon and the reception on Cape San Blas. So they're doing an awful lot for us, and I just wanted to pass that on to the board, uh, get that out of the way. Um, as you know, last week, we had a Association of Counties meeting. We also had, uh, we tried to schedule, uh, the oil consortium meetings around those. The oil consortium, uh, met, uh, at the state level, uh, as most of you know, there's, there's the five states has formed a council through the Restore Act, and each state submits projects to that council that's over and beyond even the monies that we're getting out of FOT one. And they did that at our meeting, uh, they, they announced at our meeting, uh, in Tampa this past week, the projects, and all of them are watershed projects. Some of those watershed meetings that we had here, talking about Apalachicola Bay and how to fix St. Joe Bay and all those kinds of things, they've got about three projects within, uh, within all the encompassing projects, they had about three projects within Franklin and Gulf County that, that will assist us. They're not approved yet, they submit them to the council, it'll be a long process, but, uh, the Restore Act money is continuing to help, uh, all the, all the counties, uh, the coastal counties in the state of Florida, and they announce some of those projects. You can go on their website and, and look at those projects and see what they are. Uh, but that's, that's, that's another thing I wanted to report to you. Uh, Jim, with Opportunity Florida, it's good to have you here. Did you have anything for us today? You want to, uh, stand up and at least announce yourself? I, I'm glad you're here. You can come to the podium. Good to see you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you for the commission. I better be careful where I show up. I'm Jim Brook, uh, Executive Director for the Northwest Florida Business Development Council, Opportunity Florida. First off, I want to say thank you to this commission and to the community for your continued support of Opportunity Florida. Uh, also, I want to, uh, just remind the commission that, uh, two thousand fifteen is the recertification or the reauthorization year for our rural area of opportunity. Herefore, that was referred to as the rural area of critical economic concern. So I have a letter in to, uh, to, to, to the administrator, uh, requesting a resolution for continued support of the rural area of opportunity, and we appreciate getting that back just as soon as possible. We'll put that together into the governor's office, hopefully before January eighth.
Jim, I think that was in form of a resolution, so if we could, I think, uh, the board, and all it's basically stating is, is continued support for that designation, and they've changed the name, uh, for a number of different reasons, but, uh, it, it sounds better, I think, the way it is now. And that was the main reason. But if we can, uh, get a letter, I mean, if we can get a support of that resolution, I think, and I've seen it in an email, uh, so it's, it's pretty basic, but, uh, pending the attorney's review, if I'll put that in form of a motion that we support that resolution that, of, of the changing of the name and that continuing support for the, the rural areas of opportunity.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Jager, second by Commissioner McMoore. Any further question? Anyone in the audience? Opposition?
Again, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have a good safe trip home.
Uh, the only, the only other thing I had, uh, i- is the Restore Act consultant, have y'all started negotiations and is that ongoing? And are they going to write that, uh, are they going to review the application for the grant for free, or are, are we progressing with that?
Yeah. We have a scope of services from both, um, well, we have one from Miss DeeDee, and I'm working with Cheryl Ulrich to get a scope, um, memorialized and put into a professional services agreement. Um, but obviously, there won't be a funding for the services until we receive the initial. Uh, so that will be a term of payment, if you will, in the contract for the, um, for Duberry.
Okay.
And that's the one that's doing the restore consultant work. Miss DeeDee, you approve five thousand dollar budget.
So, I thank you. Captain Buchanan, I apologize for missing you in the loop. You have anything for the board? Thank you for sitting in for the sheriff today. All right? About you, Commissioner?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go back to Mr. Jager and this fire department deal. Um, I'm a little bit confused on this now, and I want to be very careful with this. So, we didn't vote on it. You know, we, we, we didn't take a vote on it. I want to support it, I like the idea, I, I don't have no issue with that. My issue is, are we opening up a can of worms now? We have something like thirteen fire departments in the county. You know, how many? Nine, okay, somewhere in there, anyway. But does that mean now that each fire department is going to go out and, and spend fifteen to twenty thousand dollars a year for, uh, secretary to do the paperwork? Or are we just doing this for, for Cape San Blas? Because they aren't unique, they, they, you know, they have a lot of responsibility, and I respect that, but I want to, I want you to clear this up and let it be across the board.
Let me just, the reason that I didn't ask you to fund that is because we, I think at that point you would be opening up a can, a can of worms. What I've asked you to do is allow them to use the funds that they have for all different kinds of things. And they, they feel a need to start this process with, with this part-time person, to use their funds that they get, just like every fire department gets funds. They're going to use part of their funds. They also do, which, which may take it over, they also do fundraisers. They give of their time to do, uh, cook things and everything else, but the, but the reason is, they're unique. They're a unique area, they're, they're farther away from, from most areas.
I, I understand that, but what's not clear now, are, are they going to use the funds from donations? Are they going to use the taxpayers' dollars to pay this fee now, or both?
Right now, I think they'd probably use a combination of both. However, they're, they're, I want to explain it where you can understand it. If, if they needed to use all fire department funds, I just, I just want you to know that they're using fire department funds for that. But it's, it's fire department funds. It's not, it's not the ad valon that we, uh, uh, put in the budget. It's, it's, it's the point four percent that we use for, for all the, uh, control districts.
Okay, so why you laying this out here, this allows the other eight fire departments then to dip into their funds if they choose to, and hire most, whatever.
If, if they choose, and, and I don't think many will, I mean, I've talked to, if they chose to.
They can do it.
They, they can do it, but we've, we've give, we've give, these are volunteers, they give of their time, they are true public servants.
I respect.
We give them a lot of leeway in what, how they use their funds, so I think, I think that's why I'm.
Let me, let me interject here, sir. Uh, we're going to have some workshops, only if it's something we're not going to do right here today. Um, I like to know who's on first, how many hours we got, and who's up to bat. So we will have some workshops, and we'll really get this thing narrowed down, then we can go from there. But I think today was just more or less an introduction.
Well, I, I think today was giving them the authority to do that, working with the county attorney, making sure that they had everything, and that's, that's, that was the motion, and that was what was passed, so.
What an emotion. There was never a motion, that's why I brought it back up.
Yeah, you're right.
All right, let, let's hold on. I think the attorney wants to clarify a matter.
And Commissioner, you directed me to work with them, and as the administrator obviously directs me in my daily duties, um, I know Mr. Sapp, I think, set up the five oh one C three, and South Gulf obviously has their own funds, they've set that up, they report to the IRS on an annual basis as to auditing those funds versus the other districts that have their funds with, uh, the club's office. So there's a distinction of both the taxing districts and the private funds that they raise themselves. And what they're asking, the way I understand, is they want the ability to, and they do audit their own funds, they want the authority and the ability to move forward and use those fundraising dollars as they, at their discretion. And you've had this issue come up over the years as to what they can do with their private donation funds versus what screeches through your fire taxing districts. Um, so I'll work with the South Gulf Fire Department if it's your, uh, direction, and make sure that obviously there are different funds, they're not held to the same standards. They're, they have to report to the IRS on an annual basis on where they spend those funds, um, and, and they've taken that responsibility on. Uh, but I'll work with them in terms of if they want to do staffing with those funds, and you direct me to work with them, you know, I don't know of anything that keeps them from doing that, and I'll certainly work with Mr. Sapp and, and the fire department and tend to do that.
Okay, and then, then my next question, my next question is going to be, what happens when White City comes up here? I request the same thing. Are, are we going to grant that?
My, my answer's the same. You, you grant, we give the, uh, fire departments and the volunteers all the leeway within their budget that they, and it can only be expended for fire department funds, and we've given them the leeway. I don't go tell that fire department up there and we will what they can spend, or what, what equipment, or what, anything. And all I'm saying is, give them the same leeway with this particular person. Let the attorney work with them, and I'll put it in the form of a motion so we can be clear, is to let the attorney work with them to figure out how they can do that legally and rightfully, and absolutely, if any other fire department has the funds within their department, we've, we've never challenged a fire department on what they want to use with their, how they see feel, how they see fits best their individual communities to fight fires.
Motion.
So move to proceed with, allow the attorney to work with.
And this, Commissioner McMoore, you've, you've had this discussion in the past, it's usually with regards to purchasing, uh, a truck, or a pump, or an ATV, or a, a wave runner. Um, the only requirements, the county then requires it to be titled and licensed and insured by the county, basically beat it over and, uh, titled in the county's name. This is a staffing position, so it would be a, a labor expense, but it's something that it, that I see as permissible, I'll just work with the department. If you set the precedent and other departments want to use their private five oh one C three funds, fundraising funds, they can do that, they just come to you for permission to do it in advance.
Okay, I, I would request that you put it in your motion that they use only donation for this purpose.
Can we, can we at least let the, let the attorney work with them and, and let us know how that works out, the easiest way to do that?
For your motion?
I'll work with them, we'll report back to you on December ninth.
Put on today.
Yeah. Well, you just seconded, I thought.
No, I didn't.
Oh, okay.
I never seconded. Here's, here's what we're going to get into. Here, here's what I'm afraid of. We're going to have nine departments that's going to take their dollars and hire somebody. And, you know, if there's private dollars, I, I think that's fine, and I'm not altogether disagreeing with using, uh, you know, their, their budget, their dollars. But I, we've, we've got to be careful with it. And we've got nine departments out there.
All right, then to get, move this motion forward, I would just say, let the attorney work with South Gulf County on using their five oh one C three dollars for this position right now, and, and I'll come back to you later. Clear that up.
Just a minute, I, let me, I think I can clear this up. Mr., just, just hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it, everybody. You, you hold your motion right here. We have, uh, a special tax, a fire tax, and, uh, we have, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, we have the St. Joe Fire Control District, we have the Tupelo in the north end of county, we have, uh, Overstreet, and, uh, Hollis Creek. So we got four fire districts. Now, in these districts, Commissioner Ryan, you have, you probably have the most. You have, uh, three in the, uh, let's see, you have, uh, Overstreet, you have the beaches, and you have White City in the St. Joe Fire Control District, then you have Overstreet and the Overstreet District. So you've got three, Commissioner's got one, I have two, and I think you have, you have Hollis Creek and, uh, and, uh, Commissioner, uh, Quinn, yours is within the city. So what we're saying is, the special tax money that's brought in, if it's, I don't know if this is, I can go look it up, but, let's say out of the hundred percent, it goes to the St. Joe Fire Control District, which includes three here and one there, four departments. It's broken down. I think what we, the question is here, that Holland View, as long as the money that's appropriated, it's broken down, this percentage that South Gulf gets, if they want to use that money, would, fine, but they're not going, I don't think, the beaches, I don't think White City, Holland View's going to say, wait a minute, we're going to take our money to give to them, as long as they stay within their money. Does that make any sense?
That's, that's.
Long as you stay with the money that's allocated. Now, that's five oh three oh one, that's nothing to do with it. That's, uh, that's, uh, what?
Except for funds under their control.
Christmas parties, if they want to have a little something. But we will not expand their money. But we will not expand their money. Now, if they have the money to operate and to do this and. Understand what I'm saying?
I understand, maybe.
We're not going to reach over and grab Hollandview's money and funnel it down to.
Okay, question for you, question for you. Alkey Fire Department comes up here, they have something like maybe a $19,000 a year budget, $20,000 a year budget. They want to hire somebody to do paperwork. They can do it.
There again, we have always, always, give our volunteers the discretion to serve their communities, their individual communities as they've seen fit. That's all I'm asking you to do, is let them serve that community.
Put that in your motion then, clear the motion very clear, that they can do what they want to with their funds. Yeah.
It's always been that way. And if that's what you need, my motion, in my motion, I'll make the motion to allow South Gulf to use their funds as they do. Whatever kind of motion you need.
All right, let's hold just a minute here, let me go over here to the clerk. Madam Clark, then I'm going to get you next and then we'll come back here.
Okay.
Go here.
One thing I want to say is, Ms. Hardman and Mr. Attorney, I agree with them that their 501(c)(3) funds is strictly up to them as how they use it. Once you bring the county's funds into it, taxpayer dollars funds into it and you hire someone, they become subject to, towards policies and procedures and employment benefits and that kind of thing. So where you, you may allow a combination of those funds as well. I think the attorney would definitely probably need to give you advice on that as well because I think in the past we have run into where you, even if it's contractual arrangement, they can be considered by the IRS and employee of the county subject to benefits.
That's exactly, well, I'm asking the attorney.
And whether any, all funds in these fire districts are subject to county policy.
There you go, under control of the county.
Under the control of the county.
All right, let's go right over here, Mr. Attorney.
Yes, sir. It's Florida Statute 633, subsection 401 (6). I don't have the opportunity to read it right now, but I will. And I'll meet with the South Gulf representatives, I'll understand what funds they want to pull from and we'll come back on the 9th, I'll provide you a report and whether it's permissible under the statute 633. And as we've talked about, we've dealt with the 501(c)(3) funds and we've dealt with the county's funds. It is the county's funds that they intend to use, then obviously it's going to come through the commission and ultimately seek your approval. But I will meet with Mr. Sapp and the department and understand it and come back to you and report to you on the statute.
In the effort of moving this forward, this thing forward, all those 25 motions I tried to get in, all the thing I pull, I will pull back and if the board would just allow the attorney to work with him and come back with the.
Okay, Commissioner Bryan, did you have, is that satisfactory to you? All right, now, is everybody confused?
I'm kind of hard headed a little bit.
Maybe you can straighten all this out. All right, you're going to work with South Gulf. We will schedule some workshops and really, I need, like I say, I want to know who's on first base and who's up to bat. And you, if you don't know where you're going.
I respect all of our fire departments.
Volunteers.
They're volunteers.
Fifty years.
And Mr. Chairman, I agree, I think it's a great time for us to do a workshop and to have some type of long-term planning for our fire departments and work with our coordinator. Especially, we haven't really heard anything from him, so maybe our attorney can also involve our coordinator.
Now, you still have, you're good. Mr. Quinn, do you have anything you'd like to bring before the board this morning?
Nothing today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir, and the chair does nothing today. All right, this time, Mr. Bill Tinsley, are you around? You are representing the cell phone, you are, but come on up, young man, come on. Kind of been a lengthy, long meeting this morning. State your name right over here, if you would, to the, who you represent.
DAMICO. Representing Datapath Tower.
Pull that mic up, we can hear you good.
Representing Datapath Tower.
Okay.
Bill was a little under the weather and couldn't make it. Thank you guys for the opportunity to come and speak to you. We understand, we got a call from Ms. Pat and I think Bill spoke to you, Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
We built a 195-foot monopole cellphone tower out in Beacon Hill, at Beacon Hill. And we got a call that there was a lack of service to the Beacon Hill area and Mexico Beach and mostly Cape San Blas. We have already contacted Verizon and AT&amp;T once we completed construction. They both had their RF engineers briefly look at it, or at least that's what they told us. I'm here to educate and hopefully the county, the county would have to take the lead to get Verizon and AT&amp;T out here, especially if it was for public safety. That would be a big reason to get them to come down and take a look, take another harder look at their RF engineering and their frequencies and how they might be able to help the county. Maybe you could explain to them that there's a large, high volume of users on their system and their lack of coverage is affecting public safety. Say a child was kidnapped, heaven forbid, out on Cape San Blas or Mexico Beach. It would be, there's no cellphone coverage, it's hard for anyone to notify anyone unless you're close to a landline. It's a public safety and officer safety issue and due to its coastal location, also a marine safety issue. So I just wanted to come here and let you know that there is a tower that is capable of holding four tenants out on Beacon Hill. And it's on county land, the county owns the space on the tower. And does anyone have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Sure, you go ahead, you're recognized.
And I'm going to let Pat speak to this, but we've been working with trying to get this issue on Cape San Blas solved and finally, I think we're having a solution come forward. But are you saying that the tower on Beacon Hill would actually be of service to Cape San Blas?
It could be service to the north part of Cape San Blas, the northern half of it.
Yeah.
There is three other towers that would cover the southern part. They are owned by Pinnacle Tower, I just looked them up yesterday. Pinnacle Tower, I believe SBA. But there is tower, towers down there. I don't know personally if there is space on those towers.
But you're saying that this tower here will not service Indian past, you can't guarantee it to service Indian past?
I can't guarantee that, but Verizon or.
Water there, it's not that far straight out across the water there, no.
As far as cellphone coverage, Verizon, as far as cellphone coverage, Verizon and AT&amp;T would have to run their RF propagations and do their, their engineers do their black magic and stuff. As far as public safety, if you had a land mobile radio, if Fish and Wildlife or the Coast Guard, they, their LMRs cover up to 50 miles, so that would help the southern part of Cape San Blas. But not Verizon or AT&amp;T, I don't believe that they would reach.
Have around when you need them, it's always when you don't need them.
What he's, what he has to resolve the issue.
No.
One among standing.
We got to have. 100%, we've got to have some. Officer's sitting right over here, Captain Buchanan and his people, and they go out there at the mercy of the world. We have a lot of people coming down here. All they can tell you is, that's the way to the water and this is the way to heal. They don't, GPS to get out of there, you know.
Right.
Just hadn't started with it, had it in there, it's got to be addressed. Yours is about the tower.
Well, yes, sir, and we can, we can help facilitate and manage any co-locations on any other towers also. But that is the tower that we have.
Any question from anyone? Anything else?
No, sir. All right, thank you.
Dr. Hardman, do you want to speak on this, because I do have another gentleman on the other issue.